You ready?
Does he know a good time to help me to help him out?
Okay. Good evening, welcome to the Benell City Commission meeting. It is Monday, April the 28th, 2025. It is seven o'clock. If you would stand and salute the flag with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Commissioner Seacrest. Is your mic on?
Here.
Mr. Atkinson?
Present.
Commissioner Young?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rogers. Mr. Waters is here, our attorney. Good evening. Mr. Jackson, our city manager's here.
Great evening, Mayor.
Department heads are over there smiling at me. Look at all those teeth. And members of the public, thank you for coming to our meeting and being a part of what goes on here tonight. We always like to start our meeting with a word of prayer. We want to remember the troops that are fighting all over the world to defend the freedoms of what we are doing here tonight. We want to remember them as they go, as they train, as they fight, and as they come home. We want to remember also their families. Sometimes families don't sign up for what people do, but you know, it is part of the package. We want to remember our first responders, our police department, our fire department, EMTs, dispatch, those folks who take care of us regardless of who you are. They take care of you. And that is a wonderful calling in the world that we live in today. We want to remember our president. We always pray for our president for wisdom and for safety. The Congress, our state legislature, and our local municipality governments in the county. We want to remember our Catholic friends who have lost their pope. What a devastating thing that has been. And the pageantry and the tradition and the honor that's been given to him has been overwhelming. So we want to remember the Catholic churches. They begin to assign and go through the process of a new pope. That's, that's a big deal in the world around us. So Mr. Jackson has agreed to open our meeting with prayer tonight. So if you would join us, thank you.
Let's bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We asking that your presence fill this place and that you allow us to commune together according to your spirit. And oh God, we asking that you protect our first responders, our police departments. Oh God, as solemn acts for wisdom to lead your people, we asking that you give our president, our Congress, governor, state legislature, our county commission, and most importantly, our mayor, vice mayor, commissioners wisdom to go out and come in before your people. That's so great. And oh God, we asking as they enter into making policy tonight and as the mayor begin to share the state of the city, that it will be fruitful and rewarding to the hearers. And most of all, that you be glorified in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right. We have, we're at B1. We have a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. So I'm going to read that. And Vice Mayor Rogers is going to accept this proclamation. Whereas throughout history, America has faced trials and triumphs, and Americans have responded in prayers seeking courage and comfort, inspiration, and joy-filled celebration. And whereas from the first gatherings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and entreated those that they serve and represent to join them in prayer, including the authors of our Declaration of Independence, who wrote, "The representatives of the United States of America and General Congress assembled appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world and carried on to present day in the presidential proclamations such as last year's invitation to join him in asking for God's continual guidance, mercy, and protection." And whereas the National Day of Prayer has not only been part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775, but it is a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952, approved by the Joint Resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law 100-307 in 1988. And whereas in every state across America, the observance of National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 1st, 2025, with the theme "Pour out to the God of hope and be filled", based on Romans 15:13. And whereas unified prayer is mobilized across America every first Thursday of May on the National Day of Prayer as neighbors come together to join their hearts and voices in reading sacred scriptures and attending services to seek God for the city and the country where we live, learn, work, worship, serve, and desire all to thrive. Now therefore, we, the Benell City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 1st, 2025, as a national day of prayer and further express our faith and the ability to exercise our religious freedom and unite our hearts and voices in prayer across America, adopted this 28th day of April, 2025. And this is one of Vice Mayor's projects.
Yes, ma'am. And just want to thank the board for supporting this. This year, we're going to have it at the Grand Reserve.
Oh.
And our friends and family, we're going to welcome everybody. We're going to have food. So we'll have some Italian and some barbecue right after. We start at 11:00. So we're inviting everyone out to come out and just pray. You know, America needs prayer.
Amen. All right. Here's your proclamation.
All right.
And here's your hug.
All right. Pictures.
Come on. Come on. Right.
Thursday.
Thursday, that's Thursday. May 1st is this Thursday, 11 o'clock. B2 is proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And Vice Mayor Rogers is going to read that proclamation. Do we have a clerk in the house?
We have the best clerk around. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is a time-honored and vital part of local government throughout the world. And whereas the municipal clerks provide the professional and vital link between citizens and the local governing body, volunteer boards, and other governmental agencies. And whereas municipal clerks pledge to be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all they assist in their daily activities. And whereas the municipal clerks serve as the information center for the functions of the Benell local government and within the community. And whereas the municipal clerks continue to strive to stay current in legislation, effective local government, and to improve administrations of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerks throughout participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of and the variety of services provided through the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, we, the Benell City Commission, do hereby recognize this week, May 4th through May 10th, as the Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our city clerk who's without, provides staff and support to our city clerk and to all municipal clerks across the nation for the vital service they perform and their dedication to the communities they serve, adopted this 28th day of April, 2025. You know, it's funny because I asked, do you, do you want to talk to the man in charge or the woman that knows what's going on? And we have one of the best clerks in the country.
She does.
I agree.
We're going to go, come down and take a picture. I don't really think people realize the extent of the duties that the city clerk does behind the scenes. When you see this PowerPoint presentation, I'm telling you right now, I didn't do it. The city clerk did it, sent it to me as a draft, and we modified, adjusted, and, and did what we need to do for it. But I've been here long enough that I can remember the day where I called each department head and asked for a little something to give me to give the State of the City address. So we've come a long way, baby, when it comes to giving you information and updating what goes on in the city. So I just want to, you know, say that to her. She's done a wonderful, wonderful job, and she's been here long enough to know the history. And that's really important to know history in order to make decisions at times. So that's really cool.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Mr. Young.
I remember, I know you remember the days when we didn't have a city manager. We only had a clerk. And, and I think that's in some small cities in Florida, I think that's the same way. Couldn't afford a city manager, so. And I think when you were a commissioner or may, you were, you know, you had a mayor and you had commissioners. But each commissioner had to be a head of a department, like a water department, police department. And, and I remember days that, you know, commissioner had, didn't know anything about water or road, bridge, or whatever, but they were in charge of that department. You know, but those, the clerk has always been in the city, running the city pretty much. And then we were able to afford a city manager. So that's a lot of history.
1994.
Yeah.
That's when we hired a city manager, 1994. All right. Okay. B3 is presentation of the State of the City Address. And so here we go. Try to educate you about what's going on and where we are and where we're going. And so this, kind of the theme is progress is impossible without change. And so we are in a state of change, as is the city, the county, and the country. It's a different time. And so here we are and moving forward. John F. Kennedy said, "Change is the law of life. And those who look only to the past or the present are certainly certain to miss the future." And that's kind of an interesting thought when you think about it because we get kind of stuck in our rut, and that's all we see is ourselves and don't really see the bigger picture. We appreciate our partners. We have had good relationships with all of our municipalities and the county. The county has been wonderful to the city of Benell. We have quarterly mayor's meetings. We've been doing this for quite a few years where each of the mayors and the municipalities get together. And we talk about the things that are going on in each of our cities and the problems that we're having and the opportunities that we have. And many times, one mayor will tell another mayor, well, I can help you with that, or I'll send this over here. And it's been a great working relationship. And so that's something that most people probably don't realize that goes on to bond within the county. So this is the structure of our city. The city commission is on the top of the heap. And our employee is the city manager. And we also hire the attorney. The city manager takes care of the day-to-day operations. He is kind of the CEO of the city. And all of these departments are under him. And then they all have department heads. He has an executive committee. And then there are workers or departments under them. And so this is kind of how it is across the boards. We have city clerk, community development, finance. We have the police department, infrastructure, IT, and the engineer. And so as time goes on, sometimes there's flux and change within the departments and the organizational structure. A city with great changes is on the horizon, changes that are steps toward the future which are being made with intention. We are really trying to do good decisions for the cities, for the citizens of our, our city, making decisions. But growth is part of what is what I call the double-edged sword. So you'll kind of see that. Our financial outlook, the foundation for change, and part of the theme through here are stages of change. If you've ever worked in healthcare, you have stages of change. And the first stage is contemplation. And in the healthcare arena, which I've worked in for many, many years, contemplation is you're giving it a thought, but you're not sure you want to do anything about it. That's contemplation. The city knows that to continue providing high level of services and an increased quality of life, change or growth is needed. There's no two ways about it. Change is knocking on our door, and so is growth. So these are our financial funds. These are the enterprise funds. They cannot be co-mingled. They are separate entities. We have a water, we have water impact fees, sewage, sewage impact fees, and solid waste. And you can see the budget is the fourth line down. And the reserves are what we're holding back for what we, for our needs on the bottom line. And so you can kind of see where we are as far as our funds. And this was the fiscal year 2024, 25. We finally are able to fund the CRA. That's been a very difficult thing. We initiated the CRA back in 2006, and the housing market went south, and we were $35 million in the hole. Not that we weren't $35 million in the hole, but the value of property was such that it was $35 million in the hole. And so the values had to go up in order for our CRA to be funded. And so that happened a year ago, a little over a year ago, where we actually had $35,000 in this fund. And that's to help with infrastructure in our areas of need. So you can see that, but that's, that's pretty special. We only have, what, 10 years, 11 years? 11 years that we can use the funds that this fund balance, that this agency will be coming our way in order to improve our infrastructure. We have impact fees that are spent on certain specific projects. We have the building fund department. And then the general fund, as you're going to see, is what finances the most of what we do in the city of Benell. So this is a nice pie chart with colors. And you can see the avalorum taxes is 41% of our income, our revenues. We have intergovernmental revenues. We've got charges for services. We've got fees, transfers, miscellaneous, and fines. But you see, the biggest one is the avalorum taxes. And our general fund revenues are about $7.7 million a year. General fund expenditures, where do we spend the money? Well, we believe that safety is paramount for the city of Benell. And many years ago, we made a decision to have our own police department. I stand behind that decision. We have an excellent police department. We have an excellent police chief. He's all about community policing. I think you who live in Grand Reserve know that and see him. I've had an occasion to ride out there with him where we ridden the streets for many hours to make sure that Grand Reserve was safe. And I, I get a kick out of the one time where we, it was about 11:30 at night. And we pulled up and there was a garage door open, and the car was, all the car doors were open, and the, the trunk was open. It's 11:30 at night. And he's like, stay in the car. Like, don't worry, I have no problem staying in the car. I'll lock the door behind you. And he gets out and he goes over there. And somebody had come in, I think from Ohio or somewhere, and he had just gotten there. And he was too anxious to go to bed. He was, you know, anticipation. So he was cleaning out his car. But those are the kind of things that, you know, the police officer has to get out of the car and go check out. You, you don't know until you go find out what's happening. And I can remember back some 30 years ago, I rode with the police department. And I was riding with someone who had called in that there was somebody in their backyard. And it was over by the elementary school. And he told me, stay in the car, no problem. And he got out with his gun. And he's going in the back of the woods back there looking for somebody that's in the back. And there was not anyone there. But my, my heart was in my throat because this is life, you know? This is not CSI on TV. This was somebody's backyard, and the gun is raised. And it was, it just kind of drew it home that every day when they go to work, they don't know what they're going to anticipate and the difficulties with the experiences they go through. So I have a lot of respect for the police department. You can see the expenditures, the general government is 13%, finance is 8%, IT is 2%, public works is 7%, stormwater is 2%. That's one that we're going to have to work on. Park and recreation is 12%. Community development is 6%. Engineering is 2%. Fleet maintenance is 2%. Debt services 13%. And animal control is zero because it didn't meet the criteria to be a percent. So this is where the money is spent. And the general government includes legislation, executives, special, special events, facility maintenance. And there's four operating budgets within that one. So what do we do to try to keep our, our revenues good and our expenses to a balanced budget, a zero balanced budget? And the finance director, who is another wonderful asset to our department. We have wonderful staff. Where our department heads, the people that work for the city, do a phenomenal job. They really do. And so Chrissy came in and she wanted a challenge. Well, guess what? She's got it. And so she developed this, this slide because we are trying to be proactive to keep our expenses down. And one of the things that she did was we actually got some interest income and some of the reserve money that was in the bank to the tune of $180,000. That's just huge. That's huge money that we wouldn't have gotten if somebody had not done the research and made some decisions to change to be able to get that interest. We apply for grants as we can. Some grants have zero matching. Some grants have 100% matching. It just depends on what the criteria is for the grants. But a lot of the money that we spend in the city of Benell is grant money, which has been wonderful. We are actively pursuing collection of code enforcements. A lot of the code enforcements have been sitting out there for years and had not been pursued. And now we're trying to get them off the books and get some finances in, the people who have liens on their property. We're pursuing means to collect unpaid utility bills. We don't want to write off bad debt. We want people to pay their water bill. And so we're trying to stay on top of that. We're maintaining current expenditure levels to prepare zero-based operating budgets. That's kind of hard to do for our department heads, but they've done a phenomenal job. We did that last year. We did it this year. Reduce merchant fees, hold vacancies until actually needing essential employees and waiting for the fiscal year. Looking at population growth trends to determine necessary changes to the city services. And looking at property valuations to determine future avalorum revenue. So these are some things that are above and beyond what the normal payroll, utility billing, those kinds of things that go on in the finance department to try to make an impact in the city of Benell. We're planning for the future. And as of 2024, population's around 4,100. It was in the 3,000 for many years. But we are growing. And that census count on the 2020 was an accurate count. But like I said, we're up at 4,100 now and continuing to grow. So this is kind of a breakdown of the assessments for property So this is kind of a breakdown of the assessments for property taxes in the city. And so we have the highest assessed property in the city core. The assessed value was 274,000. The tax value is 219,000, and the avalorum taxes paid was 1739. The lowest property in the core was 22,000, and they didn't pay any taxes at 22,000. Highest assessed property in Grand Reserve is 415,000. Tax value is 365, and the avalorum taxes was 2,800. Lowest assessed property in Grand Reserve is 234,000. 234,000 is the tax value, and the taxes are $1,800. Highest assessed property in the rural area is 634,000. 418,000 is the tax value. $4,600 is the avalorum taxes that were paid. The lowest assessed property in the rural area was 75,000, and there were no taxes paid. The taxable value was zero, and the taxes paid to the city was zero. And you're like, well, how, why is there a difference between assessed value and tax value? Next slide. This is why. Because we have exemptions in the state of Florida, and we all have a $25,000 homestead exemption. But I was a little bit surprised at the list when I got this slide to see all the different exemptions that go on. There's additional homestead exemption for age 65, tangible personal properties, governmental, institutional, widows and widowers. I didn't know that. Disability and blind, dedicated conservation, parents, grandparents, and veterans. So there's $202 million that are exemptions in the city that people don't have to pay because they do have the exemptions, which is pretty amazing when you think about that. Doesn't change the services. We don't look at your property tax and say, well, you didn't pay any property tax, so we're not going to go out and make that call. We take care of everyone unilaterally. Planning for the future, there's been discussion about a development coming in. And so we just did a breakdown of what that would look at like in property taxes of 4,000 homes. So if you had 300 homes at $300,000, and they only had a $50,000 homestead exemption, the increase in avalorum taxes would be about $594,000. If it was 350,000, it would be $713,000. If it was 400,000, it would be $555,000. And if it was 450,000, it would be 634,000. These are possible increases. We don't have, these are not built. It's not been approved. And so these are just possibilities of what the taxes would look like in revenue if 1,000 homes were built in the city of Benel. With no other exemptions except 50,000. Economic development and new construction. We're now moved from contemplation to preparation. Ongoing investment in the city through economic development and new construction prepares the city for larger growth options. And so here are some projects that some of them have been completed, some of them have not been completed. Some of them started in 2020. The last one started in 2024. And it shows a variety of different businesses that are looking at property values and the start of property values, and how much were paid before these projects were developed, and what the current property value is and the current taxes. So when you look at this, it's pretty amazing when you look at the starting city taxes, and then as the development of the project evolved, the current property taxes went up. And so this is commercial. Property taxes could also be maybe some industrial. So that's, that's something to consider. Commercial and industrial valuation changes. Again, from 2019 to 2024, we've gone from commercial of $44 million to $63 million, and industrial from $16 million to $30 million. So you can see the change. You can see the growth. You can see that there are buildings going up, retail properties going up. And these are the, the differences or the increases that we see. New construction, we had 11 permits for new construction of single-family homes, 72 certificates of occupancy. Some of them were carried over. It doesn't always end on the fiscal year. Commercial, industrial, we had 11 permits for new commercial structures and eight certificates of occupancies. Utility accounts and business operating within the cities, we're still in preparation. New utility accounts and new businesses opening help the city plan and prepare for hu- future needs. So utility accounts in 2018 were 1,659. In September of 2024, we're up to 2,300 customers, those household customers. And the amount billed went from 310,000 to 530,000. And it varies depending on the location with the city. The customer may have a water, sewage, and solid waste bill, could have water only, could have sewage only, could have solid waste only, or any combination thereof. And so it varies. Snowbirds come, and they will turn their water off when they leave. Businesses come, businesses close. So it's, it's, it's in flux. It's not always the same. But in 2022, we had 2020, 85 water accounts, and in 2024, we had 2,259 water accounts. Sewage accounts were a little bit less, and solid waste was a little bit less than that. And you can see the amount billed over on the right. So you can see, we're talking big bucks here for utility, water, sewage, and solid waste. Local business tax receipts. Again, it's interesting to me that inside the city limits, we have 806 businesses, but we have 685 businesses that are located outside the city but operate in the city. It's kind of interesting. So the registered at one time for June of 2024 was 1,491 businesses. It's pretty amazing. City capital projects, again, we're in preparations. Projects affect the city-owned property and other infrastructures to prepare the city to grow and to meet the demand for services from those in the community. We have a building that we're building, the Benel Administration and Police Department complex. It's over across from First Baptist Church of Benel, right down the street from Wendy's on Commerce Boulevard. And it is, should be completed by July 2025, but I think it will be sooner than that. They're pretty much finishing up over there. So we have a long-term permanent home built to the city needs, and we're, will run the day-to-day operations out of there. And cities will allow the customer-focused operations to be located in one location. And so if you have business or you want to do business, you would go there to do that. The police department will also be located, but it will be a separate entrance with a separate entity within the building structure. We will also have our meetings there. So the, the comment was made, we're going to get evicted out of here, but it's coming. But we probably will have a place to go when we get evicted. So, and the county's not going to evict us. I'm playing. All right. Flagler Central Commerce Parkway, that is the road in front of the new city hall that we are building, the new building over there. And it will run 1.8 miles from Moody Boulevard to US1. That's due to be finished July of 2025, but I think that may be sooner as well because the road looks pretty paved to me, but what do I know? But I will invite you all that when the road is paved and it is open, and we have our ribbon cutting, we can walk the 1.8 miles and get a little exercise in and enjoy the beauty of the road. So I invite all of you to come and take that walk with me. It's going to give easy access to most governmental operations because there's a Mecca over there now with the Flagler County governmental services. The sheriff is there. The library is being built. It's called the Nexus Center. It's over by First Baptist of Benel, First Baptist Church of Benel. The EOC is there. The courthouse is there. So there's just a lot of governmental entities in that area. So, and if we need to have evacuations, that certainly will be a road that could be used besides Bel Air and some of the other roads that have been used in the past. So hopefully, we won't need that, but it'll be there if we do. Waste water treatment plant rehab and expansion. It's bringing the facility up to the advanced wastewater treat, treatment standards, and it will allow for the system to meet current and future flow demands. If you can't meet the flow demands, you can't give building permits. That, it's, it's a coordinated effort there. It'll double the facility's capacity from 0.6 MGDs, million gallons per day, to 1.2 million gallons per day, and will eliminate the wet weather discharges, which needs to stop. So. Brackish water reverse osmosis project. This will help with the water, and it will help to give us access to two more wells. It will implement and bring the levels of total dissolved solids and chlorides will be reduced, which will improve the water quality. So well seven and eight will be fully used. Right now, there's, they have had some problems and not been able to use all that. So we're looking forward to this happening. Hyman Circle Stormwater Project. This has been a project that has been like Groundhog Day. We've had a very difficult time getting the state permit to be able to do this project. They have redesigned it numerous times, and so until the state's happy and gives us the permit, we can't do the work. But there's been a lot of draining issues down there, and so this is going to help to reduce the draining and move it into the canal where it needs to be. So we're hoping, we've asked for an extension. These projects are grant, grant, the grant money. This is a grant money, reduced reverse osmosis is grant money. There was some grant money with the road. The county also put money in for the road. So there's been this leveraging and coordination to help fund these projects. Representative Renner, when he was Speaker of the House, he, we were able to get from the legislature some $88 million worth of grants, which is phenomenal when you think about that. Because you pay the taxes already, we're just getting the money back for us to be able to use it. So that's pretty cool. Coquina Hall Restoration, this is another project that seems to never get finished. We finished the first phase. We're waiting for funds for the second phase. We had issues with water, water damage in the building. And this is a historical building, so you just can't throw up some concrete and fix it. So we have finished the environmental issues. We're trying to restore it back to the way it was. We have to make sure it's ADA compliant. But I'm hoping that we can get this thing done and get it back open because it was a Mecca for the city of Benel for many, many years. It's a beautiful building. If you've never been in it, the walls are 13 inches thick with coquina, and it's, it's a lovely building. All right. State of change, we are now from preparation to maintenance. All city staff keep the city in operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So we don't shut down and go home, turn the lights off. The city continues to function. And we have department heads that do that. And so we have 69 employees, and you can see how it goes down with community development. We have five, engineering two, finance six, fleet two, infrastructure is 19, parks and rec is four, and we have 19 on the police department when it's fully staffed. We have five public works and three solid waste. And so this is what the city functions on a day-to-day basis, not counting all these extra projects that we've been working on for the last two years with the grant money that's come in. It's a pretty amazing thing to watch. So we offer the high levels of service with the lower staff. We have five public works employees who maintain 26 miles of, of city-owned right-of-way, complete the work on two Department of Transportation state contracts, and perform all the stormwater maintenance throughout the city. And I will say that when we have a hurricane and we have flooding, they're out on the streets, clearing the streets, and making sure that you can get from point A to point B. We have four parks and recreation employees. They maintain all the city operational locations, which are eight. Versi Lee Mitchell Community Center, the Coquina City Hall, the Carver Fields, and five of the city parks. We have three solid waste employees that pick up all the solid waste, that's garbage, and recycling for 1,638 customers. Residential customers have two solid waste pickups a week, one recycling pickup, one yard waste pickup, and one bulk pickup. So there's a lot of movement up and down the streets to keep the streets, the streets clean. Excuse me. Commit, uh, commercial customers get one, two, or three pickups. Residential and commercial routes can overlap because we have three employees, and they are out there taking care of business. Staff longevity, the biggest thing is one to three years of 38 employees. 15-plus years is three employees. And I think what happens is we are a training ground for movement. So our people come in, we train them, we give them a skill set, and then they go to the county, or they go to Palm Coast. Every time I see the sheriff talking to my police officers, I get excited, and it's not positive. Don't talk to my staff because we know, we know that's what happens. And so that's part of what you're seeing here with the 38 employees that are three years or less. Sheriff and I are on good terms. I just give him a hard time, that's all. Executive staff is city manager, city clerk, office, and human resources. And you know, the philosophy there, a leader is one who knows the way, goes the way, and shows the way, but doesn't cattle prod the way. And so we know people know their job and do their job, and we are encouragers and facilitators for them to be able to do their job. So this is what goes on with the city clerk and the department heads. The, we have a meeting once a year. Everyone else calls it a retreat. My city manager calls it an advance because we talk about what's gone on for the year past and then where we're moving forward. And I just want to say to my new commissioners, the two of them, they were at our one-day, all-day-long advance to learn about the city, even before they were elected. They came and participated in that. And, and kudos to you for caring and, and spending that quality time to learn. So I just, I just want to say that. Planning and preparation of the State of the City address, here it is. All of these slides, hours of preparation. That's the city clerk and the staff that she's pulling from to get the information that I'm giving you tonight. Phase one, phase two restoration, the Coquina City Hall, planning committee for the Italian Festival. Hopefully, y'all went to the Italian Festival. There were over 8,000 people the first day that went to the, the Italian Festival. It was pretty popular. Social meeting, advertising, vendor sponsoring, recruiting, supplies and equipment needed to host the event. I brought my two grandchildren in on a Saturday, and we made meatballs for the Italian Festival from scratch. Commissioner Schultz wouldn't have it any other way, so we did. Planning and hosting the annual Ethics and Sunshine Law Training. The statue, the state statue states that we must have four hours of ethics training every single year. The state doesn't have to do that. The state also is not under the Sunshine Law. They can have their backroom meetings, but we cannot. So our four-hour ethics training is done by our local attorneys, who come in and know the skeletons in the closet, know what's going on in the city, know what we, it's more personal because they know us. And so it's not a bad thing to go through. We also invite our volunteer boards to also be a part of that because some of the sunshine issue also pertains to them. What else? Working on conversion from the Novas to Peak. We have a replacement agenda platform. Not sure when that's going into effect, but they're working on that. We had 157 code enforcement liens and building permit requests for title companies. That's a lot. And then Hurricane Milton overseeing pre-storm preparations. There's a lot of activity that goes on when the storm is coming. And so everybody's working very hard to make sure that the city's intact and gives you what you need. So, and then after it's over with, we go out and we assess emergency and recovery efforts to see what's needed. We had the new administration facility, which is almost built, creation of ongoing capital improvements, reporting webpage, monthly reports, updating. The monthly report there is a monthly report, the city manager's report, that's on the website every month, and it talks about what's going on in the city. It's a great resource for you to kind of keep up with what's going on, what are the hot topics, and some of the data that we're giving to you tonight. She began working on the 2025 municipal election. There was a candidate handbook. Have you seen that thing? It's this thick in a notebook, right? Agreement with the supervisor of elections, meeting with the parties, and starting the election for those who qualify by petition, which actually helps to reduce the cost of running for office. No one should have to be rich to run for office. That's my own opinion. Participation in Grand Reserve, trunk or treat, assisted with planning for Benel Halloween, Christmas in Benel, planning and hosting. They had over $8,000 in sponsorships for the Christmas in Benel. That was a wonderful event as well. The kids had a great time. The parents had a great time, watching the kids have a great time. The Benel Elves made 650 handmade ornaments. There's pictures of them on the top left there. Made 12, handmade 1,200 passport game prizes. Added new elements. We used the Joanne B. King Park. There was a petting zoo and a challenge course, and of course, the Florida snow, which you'll see a picture of that. Planned and hosted the employee Christmas events, door decorating contest, and employee holiday event. Lot of stuff going on. United Employee Evaluation, this is HR, to provide more structured and detailed assessment, removing redundancies, ensuring clear expectations, and measurable performance indicators. removing redundancies, ensuring clear expectations, and measurable performance indicators. That's a lot to do in evaluation. If you've never done one like that, it takes work. Assisted the hiring and onboarding of 15 new city employees, processed 16 employee separations, three were retirements, distributed the new Streamline Personnel Manual to all the employees, and located security equipment to implement the issues of city employee IDs, which the county had done that for us previous. Information technology, any sufficiently advanced technology is indescribably, indescrib- indescribable from magic. That's a big word. Ongoing IT needs of the new city administration facility, and, you know, there's so much with cybersecurity going on now. Just think about your cellphone and your laptop, and how you're constantly trying to keep people from scamming you and sending stuff that's going to pollute. Think about your credit card, you know, and the hacking that goes on with that. Well, the city has to protect what we have here as well, and we have one employee who does all this work, and that's Donnie over there. And he's been with us for quite a number of years now, and he does a phenomenal, 11 years, and he does a phenomenal job, again, taking care of business. He managed the website for the Benel Italian Festival. He participated in a Blue Team Assessment, testing the city's cybersecurity from the outside in. And they send out these trainings, and if you click on something, and you shouldn't click on something, you get remediation. How do I know? So I don't click on anything anymore. I send a text. Is this legit? Am I supposed to open this? Because I'm not doing it, because I get this remediation. And it's just little sticky things like HR department, but it's not the correct nomenclature for it to be the HR department. And if you're not paying attention, and you're just running through, and you click on it, it gives you the sign, and there you go. Updated made changes to city website, reorganized the homepage to locate, report streetlight outages, and the capital improvements reporting page. Participated in the second year of the state's cybersecurity grant, very time-consuming with all the software updates that were required for that, and worked with the Tyler Technologies to resolve the police department issues with the computer aid dispatch. Assisted with security camera project install in EJ Park, that's the Edward Johnson Park. Implemented a pilot program for the PD migrating to the, to the cloud. They were needing to do that, and so they had some pilot laptops to make sure that they're working properly. Updated the storage for the security camera system at the Public Works and Waste Water Treatment Plant, completed update to the camera system at the water plant, had been using a Windows 7 machine to record. How in the world did you get that to update? Christmas in Benel, Florida snow. The picture on the right is the Florida snow. There are kids in there that you can't see. Two of them were my grandchildren. Christmas in Benel, they loved it. It got as much as 10 feet deep, and it was funny. One of the parents said, it's time to get out of the snow, and the child said, deep within the four-foot snowdrift while giggling, only if you can find me. And they came out wet, and it was cool that night. And so they were shivering, but went back in to enjoy it once again. It was a great event. With October 2024 reorganization of staff, some took on some of the duties of the deputy clerk. Finance, utility billing, and frontline customer service. A budget is telling your money where to go instead of wondering where it went. I wouldn't be a cashier in anybody's utility department or in a pharmacy. They have a very difficult job. They have to justify and explain to someone what their bill is when they have no responsibility or accountability for that bill. And so that's a very difficult thing. So I have to admire those on the front line. So Finance Department negotiated reduction in merchant fees, the credit card fees, developed collections process for code enforcement liens, obtained financing for the new city hall, PD Administration Building, and that was some leveraging that went on. Fiscal management of over $50 million in capital construction projects. Assisted with the city events. They were at the Christmas in Benel and the Italian Festival. They were little elves that helped to make all those handmade ornaments. All the department heads were elves. They turned in their uniforms, and they put their little hats on, and they made the, the beautiful ornaments. They did an analysis of all the utility building processes and procedures resulting in realignment of the building periods, correction of the meter read import issues and meter modular dials, implementation of new fields in the financial system to allow, thank you, to allow for notes and account information. Community development has been much more busy in the last several years. To build an effective community, everyone must realize that their community is bigger than them. I think that's a pretty true statement. We sometimes live in our own little world, and we don't realize what's going on, and then we don't like what's going on, because we want to live in our own little world. But that's not how the reality works. Planning and zoning, this is a very busy volunteer group that we have. They volunteer their time to sit and go through issues that come before them, and you can see future land use map, rezoning, special exceptions, major site plans, minimal site plans, variances, preliminary plaits, final plaits, rural subdivision, vacation of public property, simple lot split or reconfiguration. And you can see how many have come through, and you can see how many have been approved. And some of them just haven't worked through the process yet to completion. Doesn't mean that they didn't have it, but sometimes they don't finish what they start either. The projects were approved, Grand Reserve Phase Five. Now, remember, this is 2024. Benel Shade and Shelter, say that five times. It's a boat and RV storage complex, Grand Reserve Phase Five, Sparks Concrete, Steel Rel Drive. It's a truck storage and office space, Commerce Commons, a medical office space, restaurant with a two-story building, Frasier's Mini Storage Phase Three, which is a boat and RV storage with canopy structures, and Pizza Ninjas is a restaurant, martial arts studio. It's kind of an interesting combination. Total permits in 2024 was 473. The value of the permits was $87 million. We had seven new residential, four new mobile homes, and 59 remodels or additions. We had 11 new commercial buildings and 24 commercial additions or remodels. And you see, there was Grand Reserve Phase Three on the left and the state, state street building on the right. Code enforcement, we had 30 cases. Our code enforcement is more trying to help facilitate people to bring in line what they need to have brought in line. We, we don't go out with a big stick and hit people over the head. We try to encourage them before the enforcement to take care of whatever the need is regarding code enforcement. Most of the reported violations are building or land clearing without a permit, operating without a local business receipt, weeds, trash, litter, and debris. And there was $6,000 in code enforcement fines. We have a code enforcement committee, and they will give them a lot of higher fines. They may run for years, and no one deals with it. Well, now we're dealing with them, and when they, they appeal to the city commissioner, we adjust the fines depending on the circumstances. It's case by case. Engineering, a person who does precision guesswork based on unreliable data most likely provided by those of questionable knowledge. That sounds like our engineer. Who is the Grinch? If you look down here on the bottom left, we have a Grinch at Christmas. Kind of goes with the personality, doesn't it? Capital City Project Management, Flagler Central Commerce Parkway, the Benel Administration Police Department Complex, Hyman Circle Drainage, Army Corps of Engineers, citywide flood study, development plan reviews, October 1 reorganization, Public Works and Parks and Recreation were assigned to engineering, and the Christmas in Benel, and the Grinch. It was a fun time. Infrastructure is the backbone of economic growth. It improves access to basic services such as clean water and electricity, creates jobs, and boosts business. So the city flows is the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant, and you can see the flows and how they have changed from 2023 to 2024, the monthly average and the daily average. And so you can see the increases or continued growth within the city, and the averages of 19,000 gallons a day for wastewater and 20,000 gallons a day for portable water is in line with Grand Reserve Development, Development Growth for 2024. So we have some projects with some funding sources, and you can see the GIS CPR mapping, the master plan for the sewer rehab and renewal. We had five manholes that were lined, lift station, work, two high-service pump installations for the wastewater treatment plant, equipment purchases, a baffle curtain, and equipment purchase for the Caterpillar tractor loader. Let me just tell you, when something breaks down in this department, it's expensive. There's nothing cheap out there. So you see, oh, come back. So you see the projects and how much they've cost to date, and we've completed most of these projects that I listed on the left. The mapping is still in process. It's a multi-year project. And here are some pictures of something that you won't see when it's all said and done. I think it's kind of interesting to look at what we have here. I looked at this manhole lining there, and I thought it was a man down on, on the back there. It looked to me like that's what that was, Dustin. I'd just tell you. All right. Parks and Recreation, I learned how to not be alone in a playground. Were you a kid and played on a playground? Worked with Webwatch Dogs to add security cameras to the Edward Johnson Park, because we had a lot of illegal dumping and vandalism over there. They love to tear up the bathrooms. I mean, tear them up, take toilets out, take sinks out, write graffiti on the walls. I just, I don't understand why, but we've had as much as $14,000 in damage over a teenager overnight spree of, of a group. Fire extinguishers citywide oversaw the recertification and replacement of 38 fire extinguisher units, and inspection of two city facility hood systems. HVAC Annual Maintenance Visits, worked on the local contractor and inspected HVAC units two times during the calendar year. I'm really glad to see that. We need to have that preventive maintenance to keep these air conditioners to last longer. Update mulch in all the city park areas for safety in the city facilities to improve the appearance of the facilities. Parks are well used. Robert Majak was part of our city staff, Parks and Recreation Crew Leader, and he left us to his great promotion on February the 25th, 2024. The city was in mourning over this. He was a wonderful guy and did a great job, and it was a sad, sad day for his family and for the city family. Police Department, law enforcement must be guardians in our communities, not warriors against our own people. I love that. Guardians in our communities, not warriors against our own people. That's community policing. That's what that is. When you see the police officers go out on the street, and there's kids playing basketball, and they get out of their car, and they play basketball with them. It's, it's learning, going to the schools and reading to the kids and being a part of what they're doing, so that they're not afraid of the police, that they see that the police are an ally to them, just as we do when they ride down the streets, and you see them coming, and you wave at them, and they stop, roll their window down, and talk to you. That's community policing. It's not about arresting people always, but bad guys get arrested. But, and here are the statistics. You can see in 2024, we had one homicide, very tragic. Sexual assault, one, robbery, two, aggravated assault, 23. Burglary was eight, larceny was 67, and auto theft was two. Some incident trends, the chief gave us these to look at, and of course, if you're going down 50%, you say, well, that's a lot. Well, it is a lot, but we went from six to three, and I'm glad that's all we have. We're a small community, and so we do have folks that, when they see something going down, they call, they don't wait, they don't try to take care of themselves. We have, the residential burglary was down 50%. So again, that's only five people that had a burglary, which nobody wants to have that, but at least if there's more visibility of our police department, there's going to be less crime that's going to go on. Home invasion, none. Burglary for vehicles is up 25%, went from eight to 10. Are you leaving your keys in your car? You're just asking for someone to take it. Remember the commercial, where, do you know where your children are? That was nine o'clock at night? Well, now you go out and check your car. Make sure, don't give them a chance to take the car. Traffic, traffic crashes up 9%, and I'm not surprised about that. There's certainly more traffic on the roads. All right. The police department has done a great job of obtaining grants and donations. $5,700 for tire deflation devices, digital fingerprint readers, $16,900, and 18 AEDs donated to the tune of $29,730. That saves people's lives. They have them in their vehicles, and when somebody goes down, they can bring that in before even the ambulance gets there and be able to bring someone back. So that, that's a critical life and death thing. We are appreciative of those. Public Works, the road is there. It will always be there. You just have to decide when to take it. Isn't that the truth? So January the 27th, every year, we have a cleanup day. We had 2,180 pounds of trash picked up from the city streets. We do it in quadrants. Stormwater maintenance, 58 cache basins were cleared, six inlets were cleaned, 83 cubic yards of debris was removed from the system. 1,537 feet of ditches were maintained, 11 street sweepings were completed. Someone said to me, they never see anybody cleaning ditches. Well, they cleaned 1,537 feet of ditches in 2024. Hurricane Milton recovery effort cleared the roads and reporting issues to the County Emergency Operations Center. So they're very active, trying to keep your streets open and clean. Solid waste, there is no such thing as a way. When we throw anything away, it must go somewhere. I can't tell you how many times I've heard Dustin say that. That is his theme in life about when you throw something away, it doesn't go away, it goes somewhere. He is the head of that department. And so here we see solid waste and residential cardboard. This is the picking up of our garbage, our solid waste, and you can see, we actually decreased some this year from the last year before that. I don't really know, do we have less trash? Maybe that's the, the key. But we are growing, so I'm not sure why that is. Yard waste from Hurricane Milton was 1,560 yards. Construction degree was 32 tons. That's a lot of stuff.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Our clerk is the head of that department.
Still? Sorry. There she is. Another thing that she takes care of and handles is the, that department. But they all work together. So I hear Dustin talking about throwing things away, so it's, it's all works together. So 2024, look back. So let's see what we did in 2024. So Neighborhood Cleanup Day, that was the group that came. We had a real good response. I was honored at the Northeast Florida Regional Council. I was on that board for, I don't know, 15 years or something. And so the head of that board, that meets in Jacksonville once a month, and so she came down and, and gave me a plaque. That was what that is. Teen Dating Violence was in February. We did a proclamation for them. You can see the commissioners. Boy Scout Troop 400 came and visited us at the commission. In March, we had a spring fling. That was a lot of fun, a lot of vendors out on the Joanne B. King Park. Again, it's a great place to have a venue. I was honored to be touched, to be part of the She Leads Florida, which is a Christian organization that shows women in leadership. April was groundbreaking for the new administration building, so we were throwing some dirt that day. We got to throw it at the, our building, where the building was going to be, and we see the department heads who also threw some dirt, and the police department, because it's their building too. We also had a groundbreaking for the Commerce Parkway groundbreaking. So we just moved down the street from one groundbreaking to the other, and this was the county's Central Park and all the people involved in that, and that was April. In April, I gave my State of the City Address, and we had the goodies in the back, and we had the Municipal Clerk Appreciation Proclamation, and there you see Kristin. Fleet participates in Palm Coast Touch a Truck, which the kids all love that, so they get to climb in the trucks and see them and see them move. And in May, we had the Board of Realtors in Flagler County always has an annual Meet the Mayor event, and so this was last year, and you can see all the different mayors, and the county chairman was there, Commissioner Dance, and the undersheriff for the police department was also there representing the sheriff's department. And it's, it's an opportunity for the Realtors to ask questions, and so you never know quite what they're going to ask. It can be a little tenuous at times, but fortunately, Palm Coast usually is the one who gets all the hard questions. So that was cool. July, wastewater treatment plant groundbreaking. Again, you see, they were throwing some dirt again. There was a lot of dirt thrown last year. In August, two or three of my commissioners, two of them, went to, no, three of them, went down to the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference. Was that in Plantation? Where was that?
Hollywood.
Hollywood, Hollywood. I didn't go, but they went. They were representatives, had a good time. It was good for them. It's a lot of networking that goes on. It's a lot of networking that goes on. In September, we had the graffiti wall event where all the different departments came over and wrote graffiti on the inside of the walls that were about to get covered in our new building. So you can see water treatment, police department, wastewater, community development. That was a pretty cool thing. Solid waste, administration, IT, engineering, finance, parks and public works and infrastructure. So all of the departments got to come over and play on the walls. Of course, they're covered now, but the thought was there. September, Crime Stoppers of the Year Awards was to our own Jeff Trailer. We went down to celebrate him. This was at the Speedway and we enjoyed that whole event and got to honor him and that was pretty cool. He's one of ours. October, we had Hurricane Milton. It was one of the lesser of some of the storms that have come through in the past, but you can see the flooding that went on and some of the destruction that was cleaned up. October 19th and 20th, we had the Italian Festival, so that was a big deal, a lot of preparation, a lot of people. That was a two-day event. It rained the second day, but they had over 8,000 people come through the first day. So it was pretty populated. And that was Commissioner Schultz's project. And so you can see some of the cars that were there. And that's Commissioner Schultz on the right with her homemade Italian food that she had all of us in there volunteering and working to pre-prep so that they could cook it there at the site. Then in October, we had the Halloween event. We don't celebrate Halloween, we celebrate the safety, the safety of kids on the streets is what that's all about. So Grand Reserve had a trunk or treat and our police department was part of that. We had our event in Benel and so you can see some of the people and some of the stuff that people, costumes that people had. It started about 5:00 and went till about 8:30. We closed the streets off in Colony Park so that people can walk and not get run over. And so it's a very nice thing we've been doing for probably, I don't know, 20 years, long time. In November, it was dedication of a portion of each East Drain Street for the Daisy Henry Street. We named it Daisy Henry. For those of you who don't know, Daisy Henry was a lifelong resident of Benel. She was a city commissioner, she was a pastor, she did so much wonderful work. She would come to our meetings and she would do our prayers for us at the beginning of the meetings. Just a delightful lady and an advocate, a big advocate and a warrior for the city of Benel. And so she passed and we honored the street that she lived on by renaming it the Daisy Henry Street. We had a wonderful Veterans Day celebration. If you didn't see that, you missed a treat. There were 500 different events or organizations on this Veterans Day Parade and we marched down the street. It was wonderful. If you see in the middle, that is Chief Brandon. He was the head of that committee, pulled together some wonderful people, very motivated. This is the second year we had the Veterans Day Parade. It was wonderful. And so, you know, we'll have it again. And if you haven't been a part of it, bring your chair out and get on the side of the road on Moody Boulevard and enjoy the day. December 13th was Christmas in Benel and we went to the Joanne B. King Park. And so some of the kids' comments, is this place magic? And I could see how a kid would think that. You mean the samours are free and I get to play with fire? They had the samours set up with the fire so they made their own samours. We get to do this again next week, right? You mean I can pick a prize for everyone in my family, even if they are making me go home now? I'm not sure what will kick in first for my kids. The sugar crash or the exhaustion from all the running around and fun they are having, but they are sure to have a good, a good dream tonight. Thank you for making this happen. I know how much goes into pulling something like this off. It's, it's a huge endeavor. You have managed to create a true community atmosphere. This is a great event. Thank you. We look forward to this event all year long. How wonderful is that? And here are some of the characters, I mean, characters, that we had there. And we had a great Mr. and Mrs. Claus. You can see that they were there. And the petting zoo and the tree, we lit the tree and there was the Florida snow. And here's the kid who's making his samours with the fire. And there was a challenge course. It was just, it's a lot of things for the kids to do in a very safe environment. There was no main road out there. I love doing things around Lake Lucille, but there's the main road. This, we didn't have to worry. There was plenty of parking and they had a great time. We had an employee holiday decorating contest. You can see community development and the police department. I'm glad I didn't have to judge this. First place, community development. Administration, what do you get a Wookiee for Christmas? Employee infrastructure, finance, water plant, and distribution. And now what about 2025? Well, we're already into the end of April with 2025. So the Reserve at Hall Creek is a mixed-use master plan unit development community. There's been a lot of work toward that. It's been in the making for three years. It still has not been approved, but it's, it's, it's moving along. Empire Mesa Industrial Park, Phase Two Industrial Park off Mariposa Avenue. Phoenix Crossing is a 28-unit multifamily complex with amenities, affordable housing project. That's been in the works about three years. Steel Rail Drive, the tractor-trailer storage and parking. Dean Road, contractor storage yard with an office. Highway 100 Municipal Recycling Facility, Hyman Retail, Country Road Retail Store, Stewart Marchman Facility, Florida State Guarding, Florida State Guard Training Facility. We did have a groundbreaking for that. Grand Reserve Phase Six, Cypress Lakes PUD, that would be a 377-unit single-family subdivision approved back in 2006. It's still sitting out there. Tupelo Project is a 308-unit townhome project on the East Moody Boulevard. So you can see if something was approved in 2006, sometimes it develops and sometimes it doesn't. So we'll just have to see. Here are some dates that you may want to jot down. June the 7th is the first annual Benel History Day. It's the history of Benel and that's like a 10 to 3. And at the Holden House here in Benel, I think that'd be something interesting to go to. In August, ribbon cutting and tours of the new administration police department. I'm not sure we'll make it till August, it might be sooner. Ribbon cutting for Flagler Central Commerce Parkway. October 31st is Halloween in Benel. November the 11th is Veterans Day and December the 12th is the Benel Christmas. 2026, January 5th to January 9th is qualifying for the next election. January the 30th is our commission advance. March 3rd is the election and April the 27th is the State of the City. The secret to change is to focus all of your energy, not on fighting the old, but on building the new. There is a change on the city's horizon, but it does not need to be as scary as it may seem because the city is doing all it can to be prepared. So my closing comments. As I reflect on the work that has been done the past year, I'm amazed and grateful to our city staff and management. A small city staff doing such big work, keeping the city running and managing $88 million worth of projects. These projects started in 2024 and will be completed in 2026. We are blessed with the opportunities that have come before us. Again, I must thank Speaker of the House Renner for his concern and action for Benel during his legislative time in Tallahassee. Several projects we are completing this year are due to his leadership and compassion toward Benel. The journey of 1,000 miles begins with one step. Walking 10,000 steps a day equals 70 marathons a year. How many marathons have we walked on this journey over the years? Never underestimate the power of small steps. All of this activity is a double-edged sword. Progress, growth, holding on to the small-town feel, traffic, stress, and strain. The most recent number of folks moving to Florida every day is around 1,200. Florida has the highest migration rate in the country and they are finding Flagler County and Benel. We want to preserve our agricultural environment and balance development through this migration. Over the years, the commission has hired a variety of city managers to prepare for this day. We are blessed to have the right staff at the right time. Change is continual. A former mayor said it best, if you are not moving forward, you are moving backwards. Winston Churchill said, "The pessimist sees difficulty in every opportunity, the optimist sees opportunity in every difficulty," which are you. Looking forward to the opportunities this new year in Benel will bring and the changes that will make us stronger and more resilient in the coming days. Our commitment to sustainability and smart development ensures that not only do we welcome new residents, but safeguard the natural beauty and agricultural heritage that defines our home. Optimism is the faith that leads to achievement. Nothing can be done without hope and confidence. That was Helen Keller's statement. Can you imagine? The journey is never-ending. There's always going to be growth, improvement, adversity. You just got to take it all in and do what's right, continue to grow, continue to live in the moment. That was Antonio Brown's comments. As we move forward with two new commissioners, we will work together to tackle the inevitable issues that arise. I am confident that this commission has the best interests of the city of Benel at heart. We love our city and the people who choose to live here. We have adopted a servant's heart and constantly strive to make this a better place. Hopefully you feel the same and will want to work toward this goal with us. It takes all of us working together to accomplish this. As we navigate the challenges and opportunities this influx of new residents presents, our focus remains on creating a harmonious balance between progress and preservation. Our city's future is being shaped by the collective efforts of our residents, commissioners, and dedicated city staff. Together, we are building a Benel that honors its past while looking boldly toward the future. I was excited to see the Flagler County School System erect a new sign in front of the old Flagler County Courthouse after First Baptist Christian Academy moved to its new home. This is preserving our heritage from the past to use for our future. In conclusion, thank you for caring about our city and what happens here. Our future is bright with hope and opportunities to make this a better place for those who live, work, and play here. Thank you for your unwavering support and commitment. Here's to a future filled with promise, growth, and shared success. Thank you for attending this event tonight and supporting our community. May God bless our nation, our people, and our city. I'm done. Thank you. All right. We are now at the consent agenda. Consent Agenda C1, approval of the warrant of April the 28th, 2025 warrant. C2 is approval of the minutes of April the 14th, 2025 city commission meeting minutes. C3 is request to approve change order to purchase order COB 10846-2025 sludge hauling. C4 is approval of grant and development agreements for project, another great day. Are there any items that you would want to pull off for further discussion? What is the pleasure of the board regarding the consent agenda?
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Rogers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkinson. Discussion by the board. Hearing none, I close our discussion, open for public discussion. Seeing no one come forward, I close public discussion and call for the vote. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the consent agenda is approved. We are now at public comments time. This is your opportunity to come forward and speak on something that is not on the agenda but is on your heart. We like to hear what we think we are doing well, but we also want to hear what you think we can do better and suggestions for improvement. As you come to the mic, please state your name and your address. We appreciate you coming to the meeting tonight and having discussion about what you think is important. Thank you in advance. We run a civil meeting and we limit to four minutes and the floor is now open for you to come forward. I've worn you all out, haven't I? All right, thank you. I'm going to close public comments and we are at ordinances, which we have none. We have no resolutions. Boy, who made this agenda? We have no old business, no new business, and we are at reports. City clerk.
Just a reminder that on May 12th, there is the CRA meeting at 6:30 and then at 7:00 will be the regular meeting of the city commission.
Police chief? City attorney?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
That's always a good thing. City manager?
Nothing to report. Very good State of the City. Thank you.
All right. Commission reports. Vice Mayor Rogers?
Just want to remind everybody about the National Day of Prayer this Thursday.
11:00. Grand Reserve.
Grand Reserve, yes.
Yes, all right. Commissioner Young?
I just want to thank everybody for attending this meeting and I want to thank the mayor for doing such a good job and the city staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Atkinson?
Yeah, I too would like to thank the public for coming out to this evening and Madam Mayor, excellent job on the State of the City.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Seacrest?
Yes, I also would like to thank all the people that showed up. It's great to have this kind of representation.
All right, and I've given you my report. Yes, do we have a motion to adjourn? Vice Mayor Rogers, do I have a second?
Second.
Who said second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Atkinson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, thank you and have a great week. Remember Thursday morning at your place.